To call this meeting to order, we've got everybody here, Councillor Casenberg sends his regrets. So we are full of tenants other than Todd. And I am going to ask for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Next on the agenda is confirmation of the agenda, and we do have a couple of additions. Seven point four point two M I H capital purchases. Item thirteen point one, a matter related pertaining to labor relations slash legal advice. So if I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We're also going to be moving item seven point four point one underneath.
Okay, so we're gonna move seven point four point one up behind seven. Go ahead with some.
Underneath the presentation.
On some, yeah, okay, underneath the presentation. Anyway, if I could have most to prove the agenda as amended. Councillor Wilhelm and Councillor McDermott.
One, oh, question? Just, I think it should be noted that we are meeting at the paramedic center, not the county courthouse.
We know that. Okay, so you want to move that motion as amended, and you still want to second it? Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, carry. We're gonna move on here. We have consent agenda. Items five point one to five point seven. And the March third, two thousand and twenty-two council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Not seen any hands up there or here? Okay, so the motion reads, council receives a consent agenda items five point one to five point seven. And approves the March third, two thousand and twenty-two council minutes moved by. Councillor Duncan, second by Councillor Hurley. Those in favor? That is carried, moving on again. We'll now go to public meetings, hearings and delegations, and we have Todd McDonald. And John Preno. Preno, Emergency Services Lead, further presentation.
Good morning, council. Todd McDonald here, just promoted from observer to panelist. Sorry for that short delay. And just from a point of clarity, I'm assuming that I will be sharing my screen to to do our work this morning, but that is disabled. Maybe I could have some direction on whether the presentation is going to be executed by the clerk or whether.
I thank the clerk, or not the clerk, but I believe you've got the good to go now.
I'll try again. Thank you.
Anyway, good morning, Todd and John.
There we go. All good.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you so much. Performance Concepts is pleased to be here this morning to brief council on the results of the Oxford, Elgin, Perth Joint Service Deployment Review of EMS. You are the third council that we've had the honor to brief on the project. And again, you're aware of the fact that my colleague, John Pernod, is with me. We'll try to keep this brief, and then we're happy to delve into detail with questions from members of council. So quickly on methodology, this review, we're an evidence-based firm, and we've been doing EMS reviews for a long time. So our work always starts with sort of an evidence-based, data-driven sort of what is the current situation piece? And so we've delved deeply into the system performance analytics, the metrics of the three ambulance services. We have developed a demand forecast, a ten-year and a beyond ten-year demand forecast of calls and in-service work time that's going to be required moving forward. More on that shortly. We've looked at peer jurisdictions to compare these three services to others and gain insights from those comparisons. John Pernod led a series of internal stakeholder engagement dialogues with C A Os, with, of course, with the chiefs, with the, with the provincial dispatch folks and others. John can shed light on that. We've conducted a shared services review. What are the functions or activities that you each may undertake or may want to undertake that would be more cost-effective to execute together? And then finally, we've done a borderless mapping analysis, which says, what kind of efficiencies and coverage improvements could we find? If we rubbed out, if you will, the artificial borders between the three counties and started thinking creatively about which ambulance resources should be covering which kinds of territory, especially in times of peak busyness when available units are at a premium? All of this has been encapsulated in our novel of a report, and it's a, it's a long report. I appreciate that. And we can shed any light on those details as we move forward. Let me talk high level here about findings and opportunities. An important acknowledgement that these, and believe me, we don't say this casually. These are three well-managed paramedic services. They have comparable costs and service levels to each other and to their identified peer comparators. That's good news because it allows us to look at service sharing and borderless coverage between three relatively well-performing services. That being said, there are some border zone overlapping coverage issues that we've delved into, and we'll talk about in a moment. You know, a heads up for all three services. There is also going to need to be a need to plan for growth pressures. Population growth as well as growth in what we call the aging tsunami, the demographics of our population, the the over sixty-five crew, you know, guys like me, a back-end baby boomer who's sixty-one, who's soon gonna move into the demand engine. Age cohorts where a lot of the demand for EMS comes from, and that's not going away anytime soon. All of this to say, we have developed this a forecast to deal with this, and we have some advice on how you can decide whether or when you need to sort of surgically create new resources in the three systems. There's certainly an opportunity to move towards mutual emergency coverage during periods of critical unit availability. Translated into English, when most of the ambulances are busy, we can start having ambulances cross borders in an intelligent, rational fashion to make sure that we can support each other during these times of peak busyness. And then finally, as I mentioned, there are opportunities, interests, and indeed momentum around service sharing. There is low-hanging fruit to be had. Joint purchasing, shared staffing and H R, specialty assets and facilities. We've developed triage lists of service-sharing deals that your municipalities can pursue. So beyond those high-level strategic findings, we've got specific recommendations around system performance, around code eight movement and workload. I'll explain that in a minute. We've developed a mutual coverage plan during these areas of peak busyness. Periods of peak business, rather. We have some borderless service issues and recommendations we want to talk to you about. And as I said, we've documented service-sharing opportunities. So let's talk about system performance first. And again, the base case demand forecast, if we assume that structurally EMS continues to operate the way that it does now. In the case of Perth, where we have forecasted a sixty-three percent increase in code three and four calls and a sixty-five percent increase in the work hours required to handle those calls across the next ten years. Now, don't panic. That is a daunting forecast, but there are things that can be done to flatten that curve. There are also some analytics tools that we've developed. Think of them as the canary in the coal mine. When certain analytics start to move in certain directions, that's a heads up that it may become time to consider adding resources at some point in the ten-year forecast period. And that forecast should be updated annually. It's your lens on the future. It should be carefully monitored. And as we say, it should be used to support the business case for resources as you move forward. There's also a whole toolkit of flatten the curve tools that can be deployed by Oxford, Elgin and Perth to reduce that daunting curve in call volume increases. And again, especially in the second half of the ten-year forecast. And our report goes into considerable details about those, and of course, we can talk about them during the question period. Now, as well, we have a series of tweaks, if you will, modifications to the existing deployment of resources. Starting with the Milverton resource. And the reality that the Milverton resource starts its day by moving. And the reality is that three-quarters of the patient, three-quarters of the ambulance movements are actually performed at the Listel station, which is where it eventually ends up. So we're recommending that Perth should consider relocating the secondary resource at Milverton, the second car, to support the Listel station during the core hours of ten to eighteen hundred. So this is a refinement to the deployment plan. As an alternative, the twenty-four hours, the addition of twenty-four weekly hours to this vehicle would create a twelve-hour full shift, which could serve as an emergency replacement for any down-staffed coverage across the service. A swing unit in essence, while normally continuing to support Listel. So that is a grist for the mill for you to consider moving forward in terms of refining an already very solid deployment plan. Code eight movements. We've got to start with the reality that paramedics perceive the work that they do falling into two categories. Work that they do that is directly in support of patients, typically the code three, four calls in ambulance language. And then the move, and then there's the non-patient movement, the movement of units in the catchment area to predictive places where we think the next call might happen. And so there's a lot of pinballing around in Ontario Municipal Paramedic Services to try and predict where the next call is going to happen. Interestingly enough, across the sector, we don't know very much about whether that code eight anticipatory movement works very well. So when we move a unit out of its typical patrol zone, as we get busy and we move it somewhere else, does a call at quote the somewhere else location or close to it actually happen? Does a call happen at all? Or does the call happen in the area that the ambulance moved out of? We think that it's important that our clients conduct a cost-benefit analysis of whether all of this code eight movement, which can be hard on the medics, is actually effective in securing better response times. And we think that is the case across Elgin, Oxford, Perth. We just finished work in Lampton. We made the same recommendation of them. It's something the sector needs to look into. A mutual coverage plan. This was really at the core of this project. The three chiefs were quite far-sighted in saying, we don't need to, we don't need to merge everything for us to cover for each other and for us to make the most effective use of our resources. We can reimagine the way we do coverage. We can be willing to cross our borders and support each other, especially during these periods of critical unit availability. As we get busier and busier during the course of a day and more and more of the ambulances and the three services are occupied with calls. Once we hit certain thresholds of busyness, we, we would flip into critical unit availability mode. And we would start moving our ambulances to cover for whoever has hit those levels. And again, our report sets out a pretty detailed algorithm, if you will, that would say which service should be moving where in support of each other during these periods. It's, 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 it's a sound plan, and it's good government. And it represents the kind of collaboration that this whole exercise was all about. Around borderless service deployment. You know, we, we, we did a detailed mapping analysis of the border area between Elgin and Oxford. And of course, we've also done a detailed mapping analysis, if you will, of the border areas between Oxford and Perth. And the critical mass, the opportunity for considering a different approach to the border area was based on the mapping, was in the coverage area. You know, described as the Shakespeare Tavistock area, which is currently serviced by both Perth, who does code four calls, the lights and sirens calls on boat, across both sides of that border, if you will. And Oxford, who services the Tavistock area within the Oxford boundary for just code three calls. It's a suboptimal approach that's being taken right now. There's a lot of driving as opposed to, and a lot of suboptimal effort being deployed in that area. The response times are not particularly good. It's definitely a soft spot in the coverage and performance of both services. We're recommending that Oxford and Perth should collaborate to build a new shared station at either Tavistock or Shakespeare, that Oxford and Perth could implement a shared staffing model. So in a two-week period, Oxford handles days, Perth handles nights, next two-week period, they might flip. That there would be an equal staffing commitment to the area. Oxford could consider staffing that new station by redeploying its twelve-hour Zora resource, which is not particularly well-positioned right now. Perth could theoretically consider staffing the new station by relocating one of the three Stratford stations that is moving in that direction anyway, when there's a call moving in, into that Tavistock Shakespeare area. And again, the response times right now are soft compared to the overall system response times, which are good overall. And so this borderless service deployment again, is at the core of a collaboration that says to the province, you don't need to merge everything for us to do common sense things. We can, we can come up with collaboration solutions on our, on our own that don't require any sort of forced merger. So, you know, I think this is a, a sound recommendation that merits consideration by both councils. And then finally, around surface sharing. There's a whole series of service-sharing deals, if you will, that we've lined up that will create scale economies and cost savings. And by that, what I mean is when we do something together that we might have had to have done on our own, our share of the costs of doing it, whether our is Perth or Elgin or Oxford, becomes smaller. The fixed costs of a facility or of a specialized unit get divided among three municipalities, and it's a classic cost savings opportunity, again, without the straitjacket of merger. And so we have recommended that Oxford, Elgin and Perth create an ongoing, what we're calling the Paramedic Service Sharing Working Group. That's a hell of an acronym, I know, but basically a working group to oversee the implementation of a bunch of these deals. And that, you know, these three chiefs should be commended for approaching service sharing like adults. There hasn't been any turf war nonsense. It's been an open collaborative progressive investigation of opportunities to do things together where there makes sense. And again, we have a whole triage list in our report of these priority deals to be considered by this new working group. So again, recognizing we can get into more detail with your questions as required. Moving forward, I think this has been a genuinely positive exercise that is going to yield significant results. First around, around culture. There's a shared culture here that frankly can expand to other neighboring paramedic services if they want to get on the team across these three services. A new collaborative business model. You know, perhaps most clearly enunciated by the idea of the shared coverage plan, but permeating through the entire report. There's a whole series of opportunities for improved value for money, for avoiding costs, securing operational efficiencies, and, you know, very importantly, getting a proactive handle on demand and growth management moving forward so that we can plan and be ready for growth when it comes, whether it's real population growth or the aging tsunami. And these three services and these three providers are well-positioned to secure this improved value for money and manage that growth moving forward to the benefit of residents, taxpayers and patients. And as we said, we think that there's an opportunity for like-minded, you know, border service providers to this group to to join in this effort and explore further opportunities for, you know, distributing fixed costs and securing better coverage. So back to, back to you, council, and thanks for thanks for tolerating me for fifteen minutes or so, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, if we could just stop the screen sharing, I could get some faces up. Perfect. Okay, good report. Questions from councillors? I have Councillor Wilhelm with a hand up over here.
Excellent report, and I'm pleased to see that thinking outside the box, and there's always ways to improve. One concern I have is if this were to go forward, and there was a new base put in, in Tavistock or Shakespeare. Number of years ago, there was always a concern of ambulances getting pulled into Waterloo. And basically, that's why this station is here, is that felt that the ambulances would not get pulled into Waterloo. You put a base over there, is that not going to be an issue, especially as calls increase?
Through the chair, and of course, through all of these questions, I would invite my colleague, John Pernod, who is a fifteen-year former ambulance chief and leads our EMS practice to weigh in with his thoughts as well. John, standing offer for you to jump in as you think fit. I mean, certainly in, in putting this recommendation together, we acknowledge the spillover effect into Waterloo. Hypothetically, there's nothing stopping Waterloo from being at the table and making a financial contribution to the base, recognizing that there would be coverage benefits that they might secure. I suppose the reality of dispatch being run by the province in a borderless way is something we're never going to entirely get away from. But I, I our sense was that that, you know, that leakage, if you will, was probably going to be somewhat of an unavoidable consequence, and we wanted to make sure we dealt with the primary problem. But bringing Waterloo to the table to recognize that there would be equity for them in the capital project is certainly not out of the question. John, any thoughts that you want to add?
No, other than things, things have definitely changed. I was the past chief in Waterloo region, so I understand where you're coming from. And, and I know we, we counted on Perth a lot for, for emergency coverage on that side. Things have changed that allow municipalities to control their vehicles for at least the code one to three part of the equation. In an emergency, the nearest ambulance is always going to be sent, no matter what. And as you juggle these stations around, yes, you're, you're, you're generating that risk. But at least we can now control the lower priority calls, so you're not getting that, that leakage into Waterloo for the, for the lower priority calls. I, I guess you have to look at it, you know, what's more important, a little bit of leakage or improved response times in that part of your, your county. And that, that's why we made this recommendations based on, on those soft response times.
Councillor Hurley, guys. Oh, actually, Councillor Wilhelm touched on basically everything I was going to. I had my concerns as well down at, down here with Waterloo and entire services. Now we have talked here on the code one to three. There's up some more there for sure. Is that was going to be my next question down here. I'm suspecting it's nursing home calls frequently. It's, it is a lot, and I've said this probably fifty times in the last forty years. The baby boomer generation is coming, and it's here. And we're going to have to act. And us as council at all levels in the county need to realize this and focus in on this, and some of the other flirtatious things that come in, we may have to abandon because this is getting head really quick. Let's be honest, the amount of strokes and heart attacks that are coming, it's simply because of aging population. I don't know what the answer one hundred percent is. I like what I see here, but yet there needs to be solid documentation and memorandum of understandings. It's a lot. It's a lot here, council for sure. But it is real, and we have to act on this. It isn't going away. We're going to have to pay the buck for sure. We have to pay. That's how this province works. It's going to come over locally through our county. Medavee has done great work here. But no, this is a good start, I would say for sure. And I have my concerns. These cities need to be put on notice as well. And, and start with some accountability and realize they're going to have the issues. I hope they're, they're putting names on this to this report as. And they're going to have to own up themselves because they can't keep dipping to us because we just keep robbing Peter from Paul and back and forth. That isn't the answer. Great report. Thank you.
Other questions? Councillor, I think he has his hand up there.
Todd, I laugh at the word flatten the curve. Thanks for bringing that up. With March, we'll flatten the curve with our masks, and two years later. Do you have a chart to show where the ambulance bays are in Perth versus Oxford? You said Zora. So is Zora Hickson when you talk about the closest one to Tavistock?
Embro. It's actually Embro.
So is from Woodstock in, in Oxford, from Woodstock to Embro, there's nothing in the northeast? Okay, John, you're shaking your head. Thanks. So we both have good fire halls. Councillor Agates has a good fire hall in Shakespeare. I don't know if a new place could be put on the end, such as we did in Milverden, or in, sorry, in Moncton, where we put a bay on the end. And Tavistock, they have a newer fire hall there with what looks like lots of room. So there is a possibility of those two centers. That would cover off north Oxford and east Perth, what you're saying.
I would say that there's, there's some interest in Oxford in re, in looking at realigning their stations and future stations to address better the, the north end of the county outside of the Tavistock Shakespeare area, so the remainder of the county. So there's some work being done down there to, to look at relocating that station. But you're, you're right. The Embro right now is staffed twelve hours a day. And Embro is the vehicle that when it's in the station, will do the calls in the Tavistock area. So you can, you can see that's quite a drive for them. And we're, we're trying to realign the resources to where the calls are that they're going to better, and then address the issue for the rest of the county through that relocation we were just talking about, or through the new station we're just talking.
Now, when, when we do this work on how to optimally deploy vehicles, we start with the question. If the vehicle does more than fifty percent of its calls in location or community X, why isn't the vehicle located in community X? And that's where we start. And we recognize that in areas that have low call volumes, they still require geographic coverage, but, you know, it's not a world of infinite resources. And so we, you know, we start with the common sense point of view of, why wouldn't we move a resource into the primary area that it services within reason? And we recognize that we don't want urban areas acting as magnets that simply pull in all of the, all of the coverage from the rest of the county, which is why the urban areas have to be properly resourced because they're going to be where the which is why the urban areas have to be properly resourced because they're going to be where the growth and the demographic aging tsunami is going to hit the hardest. And they get that in Oxford with Woodstock. You guys clearly get it in Stratford with the way you're resourced. And uh that gives us something to work with.
And and if I could, um Perth has the uh the largest future growth anticipated of the three municipalities, like that sixty-three percent uh ranges from thirty-nine percent in in Oxford, up into the the forties in Elgin, up to sixty-three percent in Perth. You've got a a huge tsunami of your own coming, whether it be an aging tsunami or a a call tsunami. Uh and you know, fortunately, you've made a a wonderful investment in in resources. You've got great staffing uh right now, but it's just a sort of a uh as Todd says, canary in the coal mine warning of what's coming down the line. We want to make sure you understand.
Deputy Warden Agates had her hand up, I believe.
Uh yes, I think Todd answered a lot of it. My my concern is the Milverton secondary unit that you're going to move. Uh you're saying it should be in Mil or in Listowel more than it's in Moncton. I guess my concern is um the the distance it has to drive. To me, if it's in Moncton, it's halfway between Milverton and and Listowel. Otherwise, it's it's got a a um further distance to come to come back to uh Milverton if it's needed. So I'm a little concerned about uh moving that away. Uh maybe we'd be better to put another ambulance in in Listowel because it was growing all the time.
Uh uh Deputy Warden, sympathetic and understanding of your observation where in in the ambulance world, we're always playing this probabilities game of, you know, where is the call uh most likely to be and how close to the call do we want the resource that's most likely to respond? And what is the price to be paid if, in fact, the call is in a relatively less frequent area, but the drive time to get there is longer? And so you're quite right, this Rubik's cube slash chess game that EMS services play in deploying their resources is uh is always challenging. And um, you know, sometimes, as you say, the pressure valve to make it all easier to manage is to strategically add resource. But uh we think right now that you're resourcing in the system based on your busyness metrics is uh is appropriate. Uh the system is not overwhelmed uh with overall system busyness yet. In fact, there's a good amount of capacity to deal with the growth that you're going to have. And I think that was behind John Purno's comments that you're going to be well placed to deal with the pressures coming forward. But uh again, certainly understand your point in this chess game of where to put the pieces. What are the risks associated with where we put the pieces?
Other questions? Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, it's an excellent report. Uh found it very interesting. Um I just have a quick comment and and I agree with the Counselor Wilhelm. Um certainly a concern of ours, and now I find out it's always been John's fault that we were getting ambulances through to Waterloo. Um I would say, no matter what, I would urge this council uh to um to um uh incorporate or or work with Waterloo region, uh whether uh there's an addition in in Shakespeare or Tavistock or where it is. I think uh uh that's an excellent suggestion and um I think with the partnership of the three the three of us, Oxford, Perth and Waterloo, I think we could have a a very positive outcome in that situation.
Other comments or questions? So I've got a question for John. And by the way, we do have the Admiral Matt Gilpin in attendance here from Elgin. If anybody has questions relating to the Oxford, Elgin, Perth County venture here. But I'm going to say it was in the early March two thousand and twenty. Myself, Matt Gilpin and Bob Wilhelm attended a little function down in Waterloo with their broad ceiling uh complex there in the museum, and it was all about the future of health units and ambulance service. Were you at that, John?
No, I I finished in Waterloo in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, because that was a discussion how to move forward with, and I'm going to use the word because that's what this report's all about, is modernization. And then COVID kind of came along and hasn't really left us, so I've never heard any more on those discussions like this.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, the the consultations that were done.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So there they were put on hold during COVID. Uh the understanding is that they're starting, uh they'll be starting back up again. They weren't complete at the time. So that that's my understanding, but we haven't heard anything as to uh, you know, when or or what the process is going to be or whether, in fact, they will start, you know, that that's just the plan.
Okay, because in all honesty, there was a lot of comments made there that day at that meeting. Some of them I really took offense to and some of them I thought were really good ideas. No offense, uh John, but regional Waterloo I thought was a little aggressive. Anyway, uh this is about modernization. And we have to do something change because we've heard it here from both people. There's a tsunami coming. Now, part of that problem is going to be, and I think was Counselor Hurlock mentioned the long-term care, but you also got to realize we're rolling out a nice integrated health program here right shortly, and we're going to discuss a couple of things with that later on. So that will relieve some of that. But in all honesty, we do need to have these discussions to try and get a little more modern and a little more efficient. Because in the long run, it's all about, and I'm going to use the word patient or quote unquote customer, because that's what we're here to serve and shorten the wait times. And we had a report last month saying that, you know, some of the couple of calls, the call time was a little longer than we wanted it to be. So it all kind of fits in all together. So anyway, any more comments or questions? Matt, you got anything to add, being the Elgin County person?
No, uh obviously, I've been at all three presentations and and they're all excellent. Uh I agree completely. I think that we are just on the very doorstep of this modernization thing occurring. Um I know I'm in a room full of politicians and we know there's going to be an election in provincially soon. And I think from that, uh we're going to see uh some some hard times a come. And I mean, let's face it, COVID has put uh some pretty big deficit numbers out there, and I think there's going to be a push to to do some modernization, not only in EMS, but also in health units. I think we've seen some issues that COVID has presented to us. And I think as a result of that, there'll be some actions. I think we are really, really well positioned in both three counties uh to have a, you know, to for the province to look at us and say, look what these three services are doing. You know, why can't others do the same? And I I I really see this growing. I see potentially maybe Heron and uh and definitely Norfolk and of course our 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 other service and CK looking at it. I do think there's some 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 very, as as John has indicated, um some easy fruit that we can pick off of it. I think vehicles are one of the targets. There's a number of them in the in the report, and I think we're really positioned really well on this. Uh I think it's going to take some time. Uh definitely controversial uh working with three different providers uh with with the KW service. Uh we see in the same thing in Elgin. Our trucks are tied up this morning in 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 UH right now, the same issue. So we're all got the same problems. Uh I think we're going to find a solution if we work together. And that's as far as I want to take it. Thank you, uh Mr. Warden, for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, any more comments or questions? What's that? Was my is my?
Mike's available as well.
Because his report speaks to us.
Yeah, so yeah, Mike has a report later on speaking to this. Maybe we can bring Mike in right now if that's a possibility. Yeah, no, these people are still here. We got him on the screen.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning, everyone. I've been online with you all, just not in the same virtual room, just been watching. So here I am.
Okay, so we have a report from you with regards to this whole concept here further down. So perhaps we could speak to that right now. The recommendations we got is uh well, everybody's read their package hopefully. So if you want to just maybe start with what you have in your report?
Sure. Well, through the warden, really, um sorry, uh warden, I think I just cut you off. Go ahead. Um through the warden, uh uh really, the report uh just introduces uh you know, this report that you had an opportunity to read and you've already had the presentation. Uh the resolutions are just to receive the report that I wrote, that which is pretty procedural. And then to receive the report uh that the consultants wrote, and then the third one was to um receive a direction from council to enter into um the working group with the two other services. So that's really what the report is about, and I won't belabor any of that right now and would be available for any kind of questions.
Okay, so now we got Mike on. Is there any further questions? Counselor or Deputy Warden Agates?
Just wondering if uh before we go into the working group, if you should bring something back to council on where you think some of these directions should go, Mike, like, or are you in? I know there's a lot of um different ideas and different ways we can go. Are you supportive of all them? Like, we've had a little discussion here this morning about the um another one in in Shakespeare and Tavistock. I want to make sure that council's all on the same page uh before you start going to the working group, go to a lot of work and then come back and council says, oh, wow, we're not really in favor of that. I just wanted to come back first or what you're feeling is on that?
Well, through through the warden, if um uh thanks for asking my opinion, I think the first step of the working group would be uh, you know, to create a terms of reference so that we all understand what um the boundaries are, the roles and responsibilities and accountabilities will look like. And maybe that would help to answer that question, just to know exactly what it is that we're getting into, and I think that's the first step. I think beyond that, um of course, uh lots of uh good information in these reports and uh there will indeed be updates to council as we move forward. I uh we have no plans to action any of these items at this point um without further analysis. Are you look, does that work?
That answer your question, Deputy Warden?
Uh yes, yes, I trust Mike's judgment. So uh yeah, going forward.
In all honesty, you can't you can't really say whether council's going to be supportive or not because you don't know what you're supporting yet because you haven't got the working group together to come up and finalize, as Mike said, terms of reference, the news responsible, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I realize that, but I just want to make sure that county council here is all on the same page and we're all working towards the same goals and we're not having them go and and um have all these discussions and then we turn around and say, oh, no, we're not not even uh looking for that. That's not what we thought was going to come out of this. So I just wanted.
And I would offer, maybe that would be um an action item from this meeting is to uh work through you, Warden, is to uh come back with um you know, as a first step with that terms of reference to report what that looks like to council. Which would sort of set up the plan of what we're going to do in the near future with that working group.
Okay. Uh other comments or questions? I'm going to make one little comment and maybe shouldn't, but I'm going to make it. You know me. Uh because we are going to see changes in paramedic services and everything else, I think this is a great opportunity to move forward now. Because this way, we might be able to pick who we want to play in the sandbox with instead of being told who we have to play with. So I really think this is a great idea personally. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives a staff report joint. Well, first of all, I have a motion that we have to receive the joint municipal paramedic services deployment review presentation for information. Well, that's moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried, and then we're going to another one here. Perth County Council receives a staff report joint municipal paramedic services deployment review for information and Perth County Council receives a municipal modernization program report authorized by Performance Concept Consulting titled Oxford, Elgin and Perth Counties Joint Municipal Paramedic Services Deployment Review for Information and Perth County Council directs staff to proceed with their municipal partners, i.e. Oxford, Elgin, to create a non-going paramedic service sharing working group to identify and consider opportunities that arise from sharing services. And can I just add one little thing? Should we add the regional water later on? You think that's feasible? I think maybe at this point, we'll we'll get it done just with the three entities and then we can approach maybe the regional Waterloo after. Is that more appropriate? Okay, I'm getting a few head nods here. Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm. You're moving that? And Counselor McDermott's going to second that. Last chance for questions or comments on this important item. Not seeing any of those in favor. Looks like that's unanimous. Perfect. Thank you very much, uh Todd and John.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for John. You said you guys are working down Alhambden County? Are they doing anything similar with uh Chatham Kent?
Yes, uh well, there we're we're doing a lot of comparisons between them and Chatham Kent, but uh not service sharing stuff so far.
Okay.
It just uh it wasn't part of the uh the project that we had. Our project was more looking at a moment in time of uh response criteria and and response times and deployment strategies, that sort of thing.
Okay. Well, thank you, Todd and John. A great presentation.
Thank you, Warden, and good day, council.
Good day.
Shall move on. And now we're going to go to uh staff reports. And first is the health and safety policy statement for two thousand and twenty-two. And that would be Jessica, I believe, doing that, isn't she? And there's Jessica. Morning, Jessica.
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're good.
Perfect. Thank you. Through the warden and members of council, good morning, everyone. Today I'll be presenting the two thousand and twenty-two health uh health and safety policy statement. Don't take the materials as read, but I but I will share some highlights from the report. I'm going to now share my screen. Can everyone see my screen? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you. The health and safety policy statement is management's commitment towards the county's health and safety initiatives. On February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Joint Health and Safety Committee reviewed and endorsed the health and safety policy statement. The committee reviews this policy along with management on an annual basis. It has been a very busy year for the Joint Health and Safety Committee. All members fully participated in the workplace inspections and our Joint Health and Safety Committee meetings. The committee has really been proactive in hazard identification during their work inspections and oftentimes suggest ways for improving safety within the workplace. An example of this in action is providing training to departments on safety awareness and the public works heat stress training provided last summer. During our committee meetings, the Joint Health and Safety Committee members were proactive in their approach towards COVID nineteen. By reviewing the county's safety plans and ensuring they are in court in accordance with provincial guidelines. Over the course of the last two years, the Joint Health and Safety Committee has seen more departments reach out with safety-related matters. An example of this in in action is a Joint Health and Safety Committee reviewing personal protective equipment practices and departments implementing their suggestions for change. The Joint Health and Safety Committee is looking forward to our projects in two thousand and twenty-two. Members of the Joint Health and Safety Committee will be trained as safety champions to help administer the county's risk assessments and will support managers from start to finish on this project. The Joint Health and Safety Committee is also going to review our current women's two thousand and fifteen trading and provide an updated version for our new employee orientation. and provide an updated version for our new employee orientation. Safety is our top priority, and we are committed to keeping the workplace safe, and we're always looking for opportunities towards improvement. That concludes the, uh, presentation for today. Are there any questions at all?
Questions for Jessica on her report, Counselor I.
Jessica, you probably can't answer me this in public, but can you, can you tell us who's on that? Like, is there one person from Public Works and, and I don't know if we're allowed to say the names of the people on the committee. I would just like to know, because I haven't been at the courthouse in two years.
Through the warden, thank you for your question, counselor. Yes, there is. There's representation from paramedic services, human resources, public works, facilities, archives, and all of the departments. Does that answer your question, counselor? Thank you. Any other questions?
Not seeing any hands go up, Jessica. Don't see any in here. So I have a motion. The Perth County Council receives the health and safety policy statement for two thousand and twenty-two report. And council endorsed the recommendations to implement the updated two thousand and twenty-two health and safety policy statement. Moved by Deputy Ward Nagus, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions. Don't see any hands, those in favor. That's carried. Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you.
And we are going to move on to the PC Connect update. And we'll get Maggie on screen here. Oh, morning, Maggie.
Good morning.
We're ready for your report.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, so through the warden, I'm joining you all this morning to, um, report on our typical monthly PC Connect update. Um, unfortunately, our ridership was down again in February. However, we are hopeful that with the lift of the COVID nineteen restrictions and increase in marketing efforts, we will soon see our ridership return to a positive growth trend. Um, tomorrow is Transit Appreciation Day, and to celebrate, we're, we are offering the entire PC Connect service for free of cost for the entire day. So tomorrow on Friday, uh, riders will be able to travel anytime on any of our five PC Connect routes for free. So it's a really great opportunity for residents to try the service and explore, uh, the many benefits that PC Connect has to offer. We're really excited to be able to celebrate, uh, Transit Day tomorrow. Um, in order to promote this day, we have executed a very strong multimedia marketing campaign, uh, which include it, um, includes, um, print newspaper ads in several different local newspapers. Um, we did paid and organic social media posts, uh, completed a radio interview to promote the day, um, and also have radio advertisements going on multiple radio stations. So following Free Day, um, our radio advertisements will continue to promote the PC Connect service um, as an economical form of transportation until the end of the month. Um, in addition to our marketing and advertising efforts, we've also been, um, really busy contacting our local employers along the PC Connect route um, to discuss the service and really, um, discuss how it can be of value to them in terms of retaining and inquiring employees. Um, so for our interested employers, we have compiled a PC Connect toolkit that includes, uh, route maps, posters, and complimentary free tickets for distribution. Finally, I just wanted to mention that we are also currently running a community transportation survey, um, to gather as much feedback possible regarding our service. So we are encouraging residents to provide feedback on their experience with PC Connect, um, and/or how the service can be improved to better serve, um, our residents. So the survey is available both on the buses and online on our website, um, and it will be available for another few weeks until March thirty-first. That concludes my brief report for you all, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Maggie. Any questions for Maggie on the PC Connect record? Perhaps a fuel stay is the price it is, your ridership might increase.
I think so.
And actually, I was told that you actually use the service to and from work now.
I have been trying to get out. It's great. You can vary. It's very affordable, beats driving to Stratford with gas prices, and it's honestly a great opportunity to catch up on work and it's relaxing. It's definitely a a great service, and I'm hopeful that a lot of people will also realize that and start using it for a commute.
Okay, no questions for Maggie? Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives a PC Connect February update report. Moved by Counselor Willham, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? Carried. Thanks, Maggie. And we will move on to legal corporate services report, and that would be Annette.
Uh, good morning. A few updates with respect to COVID. Archives reopened for in-person appointments, research appointments on February twenty-first, but visitors are continuing to wear masks and gloves, and the masks will continue until the mask mandate is lifted, at which point we will, um, revisit that requirement. We need to have legislative authority to make it a requirement, but we could make it a, uh, continue with masking as a suggestion because it is a public building, so we will monitor that situation. For Provincial Offenses Court, COVID screening measures, physical distancing requirements, and capacity limits have been lifted, but masking will continue, and the authority that we have for that comes from the Recovery Secretariat. Court Services is awaiting direction from the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace for any in-court person appearances, but we have, we are set up as a hybrid, and that actually works to our favor because we have written to the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace to ask if we can continue with respect to having remote appearances because of our elevator project coming up. That may work to our benefit to do that, so we're waiting for a response there, but we are set up as hybrid, so if we do need to go back to in-person court, we can. Now, a few updates related to ongoing projects. To celebrate its golden anniversary this year, Archives is highlighting fifty treasures from their collection through weekly historical articles, with the plan to invite the public to visit those treasures in person in the gallery at the Archives. An update related to the official plan uh, for GIS. GIS and planning staff have collaborated to finalize a GIS viewer application and data required to begin site-specific validation of past official plan amendments. Uh, the impact review and the provincial assessment and taxation review. Finance has been having ongoing discussions with the Ministry of Finance and serving as a liaison between impact and council. I understand that some council members have had questions, and we are facilitating that discussion. The public sector salary disclosure has been submitted to the province, as well as the AMP FIPA report. Uh, that, that also went to the Information and Privacy Commission. I also wanted to highlight some community involvement by our staff. The manager of Archives, Betty Jo Belton, was a guest speaker at Stratford Public Library's, um, their Welcome Newcomers virtual event. And scheduled highlights upcoming for this month, Finance is working with Communications to offer some educational materials related to the budget and to, and on various tax policy matters. Legislative Services will present to lower-tier councils on the annual accessibility update based on, on availability and agenda priorities. As well, Legislative Services and Communications will engage in some public consultations for the multi-year joint accessibility plan. I'm available for any questions that you may have on the report.
Questions for Annette, Counselor Herlick.
Annette, the wearing of gloves, would that be good business just in general within Archives, you know? You get into some delicacy, you know, that's something, you know, probably is good business.
Absolutely. I understand that they're nitro gloves, and the purpose of that, first of all, it's, it's dual. It serves, um, for any contact, to stop any contamination, but second, it's for any decomposition of the materials. So you're absolutely right. It is good practice, and it will continue.
All right, yeah, make sure you get some double, couple X, there's a lot of, a lot of big hands in the farming community with all the Dutch and Germans. I know this, we're in the food industry, it's a struggle. No, that's, that's good business for sure. Thank you.
Other questions for Annette? Not seeing any. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the legal corporate services February two thousand and twenty-two update report. Moved by Counselor Willham, seconded by Deputy Ward Nagus. Those in favor? That is carried. And then we are going to move on to the courthouse elevator project. And Cory's coming on for that. Morning, Cory.
Cory, Warren Herson, how are you?
Good. We're ready for your report.
This is pretty simple report. Basically, um, uh, council has made a resolution to proceed to submit, uh, for, um, to venture financing in relation to the, uh, courthouse elevator. Um, this is essentially just an update report. Um, not necessarily within the recommendations required that you approve the bylaw, because that will come later when you actually approve the bylaws. Um, so if there's any questions on the report, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for Cory on his report? Not seeing any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator project slash application for boring bylaw report. And that bylaw three eight six six dash two oh two two be passed to authorize the submission of an application to the Interior Infrastructure, Infrastructure and Lands Corporation for one million two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for financing certain capital works of the corporation of the county of Perth. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. We're moving on. Thanks, Cory. And now we're moving on to, we would have been seven point four, but point one, but we've done that. So we're gonna be seven point four point two, and that is the MIH Capital Purchases Report, and is Mike coming back on for that?
Yes.
Morning again, Mike.
Morning again, um. Delay coming on there. So this report, um, is with respect to purchases for the mobile integrated health, uh, team and, uh, some of the capital things that we're advancing. And I know that this is a last-minute report. The, uh, reason for that, just, uh, for your information, uh, council, was because we had to go to, uh, we had to go to tender, uh, to purchase some vehicles, um, but we also have to close it out I am by the end of this month, uh, so we don't have another council meeting in between, um, the time it took to go through all these procedures. So here we are today. We have, uh, two things on this report, uh, I will go over them. Uh, the first one is to purchase defibrillators for the MIH team, and the second one is to purchase, uh, three vehicles for the MIH team. Both of these purchases will be covered at a hundred percent through the funding that we've received through the long-term care uh, programming, so this comes at no extra cost, uh, to the, uh, uh, to the municipal taxpayer. So the first thing on the list is the cardiac monitors, our cardiac monitors. Um, we are looking, uh, we are recommending that we purchase the same cardiac monitors that we already have, because we, um, there it will allow continuity of patient care. We don't have to have different, uh, defibrillators out in our system, and that would be uh, certainly problematic if we were, uh, switching like pads or, um, our preventive maintenance program and all of those are very different reasons, um, for continuity and safety of patients. It's important that we stick with the same piece of equipment. Uh, so those defibrillators were estimated to cost between thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars apiece, and we will be single sourcing those purchases. Um, if it is approved today. And then the second, uh, thing, the second resolution that, uh, we're recommending is that we did put out for an RFT for three crossover vehicles, um, that are SUVs, uh, four by four, so that they can, uh, work within our municipality in the winter. And, uh, we did receive one bid on that tender, uh, for Ford Explorers at around fifty thousand dollars apiece plus tax, and again, those purchases would be, uh, covered at a hundred percent from the community paramedic funding, that, um, LTC funding that we received from the province. Uh, so I would open the floor to any questions at this point.
Questions for Mike, uh, on this, and I have Counselor Willham with his hand up.
I don't have a problem with this. I think it's wise to continue on the same equipment you have. Uh, my only question really is, is when is Ford, uh, promising these vehicles be delivered? Or do you have a date?
Yeah, thi- thanks, uh, through, through the warden. We have, um, I believe the first one would be roughly sixty days and then one month afterwards for the following two, so we have a, uh, timeline that is, given the circumstance, reasonable, and currently we will use enterprise rental to um, uh, fill the, re, fill our needs until the time that we receive them through delivery.
Your question? You don't ever sit on a lot over in St. Mary's Bobby, I'll put a look.
I'll drive around.
Uh, okay, other questions? Don't see any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the MIH Capital Purchases Report. And Perth County Council authorized paramedic services to single-source the purchase of cardiac monitors slash defibrillators pursuant to section fourteen G of the purchasing bylaw thirty-six thirty-one dash two thousand and seventeen. And the Perth County authorized paramedic services to award the request for tender two thousand and twenty-two slash oh thirty-three slash oh one pursuant to section fourteen D of the purchasing bylaw thirty-six thirty-one two thousand and seventeen to St. Mary's Ford Sales Limited for the purchase of three SUV crossover vehicles. Moved by Counselor Duncan, seconded by Counselor Willham. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? Carried. Perfect. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And we will move on to tender results, Public Works. And John's here. Is Bill coming on for that, or are you gonna do that, John?
Oh, I'm gonna take care of both.
Okay.
Thank you, Warden Herson. Good morning, council. Uh, this report is the tender results for two bridge rehabilitation projects on Perth Road one twenty-one. One bridge is in Poole and the other bridge in Millbank. You received six bids, which are tabled in the report. The little bid is from Enscon Limited out of North York, Ontario, and at a price of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars plus HST. This bid is under budget. Uh, we have not worked with this company before, nor have we heard of them. Uh, so we had BM Ross, uh, do a reference check on them. And while none of the work, uh, were bridge rehabs, there were similar works involved with the reference projects. But we are not aware of any reason why we should not accept Enscon's bid and recommend that council award contract at behalf of the answer to questions.
Okay, questions for John with regards to this report? Counselor Herlick, I think your hand's up.
No, great, thanks. No, it's interesting. Like you said there, it's kind of new area by the looks of it for this company. Being said, we all start somewhere and have similar jobs. Uh, that next tender was within ten thousand dollars. What kind of experience do they have in this?
John, through the warden, uh, we have worked with the, uh, uh, second place bid before. Uh, they have done work in the area of bridge projects prior to, so, uh, they do have experience with this.
No, okay, interesting. No, uh, it's transparent. You did a little groundwork. They should come through, so, no, thank you.
Other questions? Don't see any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the tender result. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand and twenty-two slash oh three one slash oh one. Bridge structures one, two, one, oh, seven, eight, Millbank and one, two, one, oh, three, four, Pool. Rehabilitation report and Perth County Council Award tender two thousand and twenty-two slash oh three one slash oh one to Enscon Limited. And that Perth County Council approved by law three eight six five two oh two two being a bylaw to authorize the entering into the ex, in execution of an agreement between the corporation, the county of Perth and Enscon Limited. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Hurley. Last chance for questions. Those in favor. Let's carry. Next we have the courthouse elevator project.
Thank you, Warden, and this report recommends to retain the services of any engineering for the project supervision, con, construction oversight and contract administration for the courthouse elevator project. Uh, NA Engineering has been the primary consultant on the elevator project to date. Has extensive knowledge and familiarity with the courthouse and have designed the elevator project plans. Uh, the county will require a consultant engineer for the remainder of the project to provide construction supervision, site inspections and contract administration. Unfortunately, the resolution from May of two thousand and twenty did not include the remaining consulting services. Uh, the report outlines the scope of work of the remaining consulting services and the supporting information to recommend NA Engineering. However, the report does not outline the impacts should council wish to procure these services being an alternative method, which would be an RFP. Uh, there's an important point that I should make clear. Uh, because NA Engineering has designed, engineered and stamped the plans, they are the engineer of record on this project. Regardless of how we procure the remaining consulting services, any engineering will be required to provide a portion of these services as the engineer of record. This means they will be involved with the permit process, site inspections, site review reports and final compliance confirming the installation is in accordance with code standards and the drawings. This makes up a good portion of the scope of work outlined in the report. Uh, we can do an RFP for the remaining scope of the consulting services. However, it would likely take a month and a half before we get that RFP awarded, which could delay the construction schedule. For these reasons, we are recommending NA Engineering provide the entirety of the remaining consulting services. And I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, questions for John on that report? Oh, no, oh, Counselor Wilhelm?
Um, I just have an issue with. Um, to me, this is, uh, single source. And, uh, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think we should go with an RFP. And I realize that NA has done a lot of work on it, and hopefully they would come in with those most bit. But I think for the hundred and twenty-five thousand, it should be tendered.
Okay, other comments? Counselor, Deputy Warden Eggers.
John just mentioned there about a delay. So how much of a delay would there be if we go to tender?
Through the warden, if we put out a proposal, in all likelihood, um, if we're looking at about a month and a half before we can get that awarded. Um, if that is awarded to a consulting engineer other than NA Engineering, there will also be a delay in order to get that consulting firm up to speed on the project. Uh, and, and as stated, uh, the scope of work that we would be going out for RFP would be reduced from the one that's outlined in the, uh, in the report because a, a portion of that or a good portion of those, that, that scope of work would be done by the engineer of record.
So I hear what Bob is saying, but I don't know, I, I tend to agree that we need to go with NA Engineering because it's going to delay it. Time you get them up to speed, it's going to take a lot longer, I think, than what we want it to take.
Other comments or questions? Not seeing any hands. I'm gonna read a motion off and I'm gonna see where it goes. Uh, Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator, elevator project supervision and contract administration report. And the Perth County Council directs staff to retain the services of NA Engineering for project supervision, construction oversight and contract administration of the courthouse elevator project. Is there a mover and a seconder for that motion? Deputy Warden Eggers, is there a seconder? Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor, oh, Counselor Herlick?
It's a, it's a bit of a big choice here. I agree with Counselor Wilhelm, however. I know how this can go sideways too. I got some experience in similar dealings on a smaller scale. It sounds we've had good luck so far with our dealings with who we're dealing with, and that is why I'm taking that choice. And we just go forward in this direction. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? So the motion's on the floor, moved and seconded. Those in favor. Oh, that's carried. Okey-dokey. Oh, excuse me, we're moving on. And next is the facilities division project update. John?
Thank you, Warden H, since we got the final report here is just to update council on the status of our three major projects. One being from two thousand and twenty-one and the other two that are ongoing in, in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, first one is the paramedic services headquarters, the administrative office renovation which began last October and was completed in February. Um, we are pleased with the outcome of this project. Um, the funding information and costs were included in the report. Um, and as I said, we're, we're pleased with the, the design workmanship and the outcome of the project. Um, the next one is the courthouse elevator, and we just outlined where we're at with, with the, uh, project itself. And so the, uh, the contract has been awarded for construction to Elven, constr- Elven Constructing and Restoration Limited. And the, the agreements, uh, contract agreements are with them currently uh, for signing, and they are also providing bonding for the job, and we expect that to end shortly. Um, the next project is the Five Huron renovation and connecting Link Edition. And just updating council where we're at with that project, uh, we've engaged uh, May Hugh for the design services for that renovation and connecting Link Edition. Um, we are well on the way to, to the product, completed the project startup and are into the needs analysis and programming. And we expect to have that stage completed by early April and then into the schematic design. Um, at the end of the schematic design process, we anticipate that May he'll be back to present to council where we're at. So, uh, schematic design in no way means that, uh, the project is planned and completed. Uh, it's just a stage in the process where we have a lot of the, uh, things nailed down and, and are a good place to bring that back to council for, for, to view. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions with any of the three projects in the report.
Questions for John, I'm Counselor McDermott.
Oh, yeah, uh, great report. I was just wondering, I forget when the building here get built. Uh, through the warden, it was completed in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. Okay, no, I just forgot.
Other questions for John? Don't see any. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives a facility division project updates report. Moved by. Counselor Herlick, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor. That is carried. We're moving on again. So, we are at council reports. Do we have anybody with some reports? Don't see any hands going up. Bylaws. So we have bylaw three eight six five two oh two two be ready first, second and third time. And finally passed the seventeenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-two. And that is your binding bridges tender. So you know what the bylaw is. Uh, moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Last chance for questions, those in favor. Carrie, and I have bylaw number three eight six six dash two oh two two be ready first, second and third time. And finally passed the seventeenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is for your boring bylaw, the courthouse elevator. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Ait. Those in favor. That's Carrie. And next on the agenda is notice of motions. I'm not seeing any, uh, other businesses. Anybody have anything to bring up for other business? Counselor McKenzie.
There, get my mute off here. Yes, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or under announcements or, or what. But again, I would just like to mention that we certainly in West Perth and the residents of West Perth and the, and the council of West Perth certainly appreciate all the assistance that we've had, uh, during our nine-day of search and recovery operation that we had. Uh, the support that we received was certainly overwhelming and, uh, um, as I've said before, uh, uh, we probably wouldn't have been able to handle it, uh, without all the assistance. And, uh, just not only, uh, from our own, uh, um, more tiers in Perth County, but we had assistance from outside the county as well. And, uh, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart to all those that helped us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Walter. It was an unfortunate situation. Uh, anybody else have any announcements? Or other business? I'll do them both at the same time. Not seen any other hands go up. Okay, uh, we are now going to move into closed session. In accordance with section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act. And it is to do with a matter pertaining to municipal property and negotiations. A matter pertaining to solicitor advice slash litigation. A second matter pertaining to solicitor advice litigation. And a matter pertaining to labor relations slash legal advice. Moved by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor. That's carried, so we are moving into closed session at ten twenty-four. And we'll take about a five, six, seven minute break because we have to stop de-streaming and the whole nine yards and. Okay, so we're now recording again, we're back in open session. Um, we have very little left to do here, but first thing we need to do is a confirmatory bylaw. Bylaw three eight six seven two oh two two by law, confirm the proceedings of council. The corporation, the county of Perth, that has regular meeting held March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two is ready first, second and third time, and finally passed March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm, or Counselor, we'll put Counselor right down there. We got a delay in the screen. Those in favor. That's Carrie. And the last motion is that county council meeting be adjourned at eleven thirty-four. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor. That is Carrie. And we got Doug back, but we're, uh, we're done.